We'll call the Scottsboro work session you ordered. The invocation given by Mr. Wallensford and the place he wishes to come to, Mr. Keith.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, we pause to lift up your name and give you thanks and praise. As we enter this holy season, we look forward with eager anticipation at the coming of your son and the celebration that will follow. Father, we invite you among us here this evening and we ask for your discernment in making decisions for the city, leading guys into your will. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen. Blessed are the nations of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is airing with Muscular Dystrophy Association. I recognize Chief Necklace and Scottsboro Fire Department.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you Mayor and Council President and members of the committee for allowing me just a minute on your agenda this evening. Thank you so much. My name is Erin Franklin and I represent the North and Central Alabama chapter of the Muscular Dystrophy Association. I don't know if you're very familiar with MDA, but we work to fund treatments and find cures for diseases that take away the ability to walk, run, hug, talk, and even breathe. We do that through the partnerships with organizations across the country and our longstanding partnership is with the firefighters. The Scottsboro Fire Department, sorry, I get very emotional when I think about the relationship that we have with our firefighters. They have worked with us for over sixty years in the fight against muscle disease. Together, we are helping kids and adults and the families who love them live longer and grow stronger. So I'm here tonight to thank Chief Necklace and with his support and the leadership of Patrick Dykes and the Sea Shift, they filled the book for us again this year. It's been several years since we've worked together and I'm so thankful for them again this year. And this year they raised over twenty-two hundred dollars for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. So I would like to take a moment and if I may introduce Chief Necklace out so I can present. Great, they're here. They were out on a call. Patrick? Patrick, thank you so much for your leadership. I appreciate it. Thank you. I hope that we can work together in the future. All right. True hero, thank you so very much for your time this evening.
Next item is Woody Sanderson with Personnel Handbook.
Yes, Council, appreciate your opportunity to come and visit me all of a sudden tonight on this issue. This is a matter we've been working with Mayor Potter and Erin Dixon, your HR Director, for some time on. Steve and I have talked about it in a number of cases. For those of you that I haven't met before tonight, I'm an attorney in Huntsville and I've worked with you over a number of years, often through your insurance carrier when you had lawsuits and other matters to defend, but also helping out in certain situations with employment issues. And we've had discussions over that time about areas where you probably become more efficient and have improvements in personnel policy manuals and handbook for employees. One consideration is to assure that you're meeting federal requirements and if you haven't updated handbook in ten, fifteen, twenty years comprehensively, it needs a review every once in a while because those things change very often, everything from family medical leave to Fairlight Restorations Act and all other things that would apply. And certainly to keep up with the due process requirements and any disciplinary action. And the other thing that has evolved that we've noted over time with other cities and public entities that we represent is it's gotten to be seeming more cumbersome, more difficult to provide the due process that you, that are often set out in these manuals and do it in a cost-effective and time-effective way. Personnel matters tend to get expensive and drawn out, take a long time to resolve, and often you don't have the consistency of results that you like to see. What we've tried to do the last couple of years working with several clients is to try to streamline that process and get it as efficient as you can. You have to customize it for particular clients. Some may not have all the same requirements that you have under the state statutes to comply with state law in addition to the federal laws that apply to you. But we want to try to come up with a process and we think we have that allows you to be a little more efficient with that and provide, particularly in the context of providing disciplinary actions or responses to grievances and to do it promptly and efficiently and in a way that reaches consistent and fair results as promptly as possible without undue expense. And so we would like to present this notion with you of proceeding to try to do a rewrite of your handbook to meet all of these kind of objectives. We've talked a bit with Council President Stewart about it tonight just before the meeting and wanted to present the idea to you. Get any questions or feedback that you would like to give because what we didn't want to do is without some guidance or input from you guys to go down that road, do a lot of work in it and come back and find it and say, is that what you want to do? So we'd like to be able to work with not only your HR Director and the Mayor, but also have some input from the council because ultimately y'all are going to be, once after adoption, whatever we come up with and want to make sure you're comfortable with it before we go down the road and make wholesale or large revisions to some policies that you may not want to go in a particular direction. But that's sort of the idea we wanted to toss out with you tonight. We're happy to respond to any questions or input or ideas about it. If you would like us to proceed to get something together to bring back to you, we'd be happy to go down that road, but just wanted to give you an opportunity to think about it and have input with us. You may want either tonight or later to talk about it among yourselves and decide what you'd like to do. It's a process that I would envision would probably take us three, four months, working pretty diligently at it to get it in shape, to put it in final, ready for final adoption by the council. And it's something that having worked with you and your manual and over repeated time, I think it is probably time to tackle it. I would certainly recommend this thing back there.
Are there any questions for?
Mr. President, I would concur with what the service has said. I think it appears important that we update the current personnel handbook. I have the utmost confidence that some of our internal department can get this done correctly.
I neglected to introduce my associate, Chris Pythers here. Chris has worked with us for several years and he's becoming a specialist in working on HR manuals for a number of clients and is very good at drilling down and getting to the most efficient handbook that we can have.
And this is something that other municipalities, their...
Yeah, of course, everybody has to have them and you really need to be updating them periodically. Kind of thing that you want to settle on a process and one that works for you and is efficient and not difficult to administer or cumbersome. I think that there's some room for y'all to consider some changes with yours and hopefully have it be clear and concise and something that works for you efficiently and inexpensive. We are, we're doing it now for a number of clients presently. It's not that it's new, everybody has to do it periodically, but it does seem to be a lot more demand for it right now than we've seen in the past.
Mr. Chamberlain, what's the last provision?
It's been several years.
I think I worked on one that had some changes about, but forward.
I think that's lots.
Any other questions? Is this something that's already budgeted until this or when this comes out?
No, this is not a budget, so we have to do a budgeting.
Any other questions, Mr. Sanderson? There's not any objections. I'm about to work with them on this project as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll be looking forward to working with you.
Next item is the resolution, public transportation funds for the senior center.
This is a resolution that is passed every year. It will allow the Scottsboro Senior Center to obtain Section 5311 funds from the Alabama Department of Transportation, which includes a local match of fifty percent for operating expenses and twenty percent for administration and capital expenses. The amount budgeted for fiscal year 2016 is forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
There's no objections. We'll move ahead to tonight's council meetings, whether there are any questions on that. I will move it to council meeting. Next item is the update signs coming in Scottsboro. We've had a committee formed on this project for quite a few months and working with Josh, I'm on the committee as well with Josh, our city engineer, and what we came into, if we're moving ahead with the progression, we found out that we have to have a resolution adopted for us to be able to put one out on Highway 72 coming into Scottsboro. So I'm asking for us to put this on tonight's agenda and pass this so we can move ahead with this project. We're looking at four signs, but we need a starting point at this particular... Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mayor?
The only thing I would add is the money for these signs were appropriated by the Bound, Bound Foundation a year or so ago, so we appreciate them doing that.
How much money?
If you got a estimated price on the final design, Josh?
That's about fourteen for one sign, Patrick. So we did take sides right now.
I believe their grant was twenty-five thousand, so I think it's one of those that once we get one, then they'll have plans of more.
Do we need to do a resolution individually for four or ones for all four? It's for one sign.
Because there may be some areas that we don't have to be on the highway part right away to do it. This is just for a particular time on Highway 72, I think, right?
Correct. Do you have anything else, Josh? Would this be coming from high school to Scottsboro? Any other questions? We'll move ahead to the night's agenda as well. Next item is Mayor Mel Potter, the Scotts capital projects.
I have in your packet there some information about some proposed capital projects for the city. There are four different projects. I'll go over them just one by one. The first one would be to renovate the Veterans Field Baseball Complex. It would demolish the concession stand and remove all the dugouts, the concrete, the fencing. All that would be done with city equipment and manpower. Then we'd have a new concession stand constructed with handicap restrooms, dugouts, fencing, netting, in concrete, scorekeepers booth, block wall running from dugout to dugout, shades over the spectators area and possibly a playground. It's essentially removing everything but the four playing fields themselves. Veterans was built in nineteen seventy-four. There's not, there's been very little done to it through the years and we have some estimated costs as you're not, they haven't been put out for yet or anything, but the estimated cost to an architect is roughly a million dollars for that project. One of the reasons that we're bringing this up, that I'm bringing this up now, if you elect to do these projects and you know, do the funding for it, then the idea would be to go ahead and get the plans in place to where when the baseball season is over and I think it's July, sometime around July, that they can start construction and demolition and construction and then have it ready hopefully by April. And of course, all that is weather dependent. Second project is renovate the swim pool area at the Redcom. I don't know if you've been over there lately, but all those translucent panels have faded and overhead in the side of the pool and replaced them with more advanced and economical panels. The heating, that place has heating and air conditioning and humidification. It hasn't worked in several years, I know ten or fifteen years, but it helps, it would be installed a new HVAC and humidifier, which would help remove the corrosive atmosphere that we see over there with a lot of the things being rusted because of the chlorine and not being able to remove the air. We'd install new exhaust fans, the pool would be refurbished, be drained and then sanded down and repainted, the pool decking would be resurfaced, and remodel the locker rooms in the Redcom. That swimming pool was built in nineteen eighty-nine and again, has had very little upgrades to it or mostly just been in repair mode. The estimated cost of that is a million dollars also. The third thing is fire station number three. We would look at demolishing existing living quarters with city equipment and manpower again and leave the existing engine room, which is about seventeen hundred and sixty-six square feet. Build the new living quarters. The existing living quarters is approximately two thousand and it would be enlarged to three thousand. That building also was built in nineteen eighty-two and the estimated cost to do this work is around five hundred thousand dollars. Finally, in addition for the Heritage Center, there would be a three thousand square foot addition and would have a new kitchen, exhibit and reception room and handicap accessible bathrooms. I think Ms. Ivey's going to go into more detail about this, but she first approached me back in two thousand thirteen about this project. I found the paperwork today. I was wondering how long it'd been and I feel the drawing that she's going to show you was actually rendered in nineteen eighty-nine and so that's how long this has been on the plan for the Heritage Center. In two thousand thirteen, I spoke to the council at that time. We were going to do a partnership with the Jackson County Commission and the legislative delegation. The idea was to split the estimated cost. Each entity put in two hundred thousand dollars. We would put in fifty thousand a year for four years and the city was agreeable to it, but the county commission and the delegation was not able to participate and so the idea kind of, it fell away until now. So the big thing is what about the money for all of this? That's a total of three million dollars worth of projects. You have in your packet also a layout talking about our annual, our debt service and our annual bond payments and then you have a chart that shows the same thing. But right now, our annual bond payment for all the city's debt that we owe is one point five million dollars a year, one million five hundred and forty-eight thousand. In two thousand twenty, based on our current debt, that payment would fall to nine hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. If we added a three million dollar issue for twenty years, our payment in two thousand sixteen would be one million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars, or a difference of forty-nine, almost fifty thousand dollars more. On our current debt, our bond payment in two thousand sixteen, if we, not our current debt, but our bond payment if we added a three million dollar issue would be one hundred and seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars more in two thousand twenty than it would be if we didn't have the issue. And you have that in your chart that shows how much more the payment would be versus if we didn't do this issue, if that makes sense. All of our bonded debt, this, whether we do this three million dollar issue will pay off in two thousand forty-one. The latest bond interest was November, was, you see the amount there. I don't really want to get into it because you also see some interest rates from local banks and we haven't received all of those, so I appreciate you not sharing that information until we get all of those in because we look, we are looking at doing it with a, with a local bank. And so, long story short, our bond payment will not be any more now than it is when we have the three million or not. It's just that we will be paying more down the line for each year than what we did if we didn't pay, have a three million dollar issue. You know, these are, I feel like they're worthwhile projects. It's projects that will enhance the quality of life in our city and as well as public safety. The only thing that I know from a standpoint of future projects would be putting in a new sale in our landfill, which would cost about two and a half billion dollars toward Eddie. And I think the need for that's going to be five or six years roughly, what, five years? So that's the only other capital projects that I can foresee. You know, you may have different ideas. Again, I just want to put this information out there for you to consider and be glad to try to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Wallensford happened to get the strip broke today, so he's not here, so I'll try to answer your questions. He has been, knows, knows all this information and has basically said that, you know, we can afford to do this if that's what you would like to do. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I have time. First of all, I was here when we talked about during the board with the county commission and local legislative delegation and the Heritage Center, all of participating, as you said, that kind of fell away because of the county commission, the local legislative delegation and of course, the Heritage Center doesn't have a lot of resources coming in, so it went away. And then it kind of fell back on the plate, but the county commission, the legislative delegation, or anyone else except for us didn't fall back with it. It's just us. I understand how the thing would do anything to a non-bond issue. And also, I know about the sale and what that's going to cost and that's a lot of money, but we also, I think all of our garbage struck for one out, I think all of our rollbacks for one out, three of those at two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, three rollbacks at a hundred and fifty thousand, I don't know what that is, and on top of the sale, so I don't know how else we'll get the money for that except the bond issue, our borrow from the local bank. We're talking several million dollars there. So that has me concerned. Another thing that has me concerned is that everyone in this room knows that the potential for something happening in this country, where in the form of a terrorist attack could happen at any moment. And that might not mean much if you're locally to have it in New York, but I think it's been proven that it could be here, on state, anywhere. And should something really bad happen, then our economy could go down, the stock market could crash, everything could happen. And there may be a time when we might need to sit back and just wait, pay on what we owe, save on what we don't, where things really get bad, we'd be able to... I know you'll say, well, if we can't, nobody can, but maybe if they can't, maybe we can and put us a little bit ahead. And then one more issue that really concerns me and I've witnessed it firsthand, is that all the money that we receive from sales tax in this city probably keeps us going, but there's so many people now that are doing their buying on the website, on the internet, and they pay no taxes whatsoever and we don't get any of that money. And I can witness that at my own home. There's a package on my door every day and it's stuff that we can't buy here or we get it cheaper there and we don't have to pay that money. And that's stupid for me to be on the city council every day, but my wife does what she thinks is right for my family and she bought this stuff and we buy what we can locally. But everybody in town, and I talked to the man this morning at daylight at my house, and he says, this year is the biggest they've ever had, that people order stuff online and we don't get any of that. So that's a concern to me, that our tax could go down each year instead of up like it has been doing in the past, but it's starting, it's starting to get serious and something's got to be done about taxes and these things. But when you put all that together, I'm just concerned about borrowing three more million dollars and then next turn around I have to borrow three more million a few years later. At some point, when you have to borrow and I start paying, and I don't think we're there yet, I'm not saying that. I'm only saying that sometimes you might need to get ahead of that game just a little bit and that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on that?
Am I reading this right, Mr. Mayor, that we basically, if we were elected to do this, this issue, you're making no principal payment, looks like out to eight years. First year, you're making, you're probably not keeping up with interest, right? That's one of my concerns and if you're not keeping up with interest, then you start to pay interest on interest.
I think it is basically just an interest payment, Mr. Wallensford, but I don't know where I... Rick's not here, so...
And I did, I came earlier to talk to Mr. Weaver, you know, about that. I, you know, one of the issues too, I think, was if we were going to borrow money, it needs to happen fairly quickly. I've talked to financial people, including our buying company, and they all agreed that short-term rates are likely to go up after the first year, the first of the year, but these are, these are long-term negotiated rates and that, we've got a wider window as far as those rates go, so I don't know that the sense of urgency. So I think these are all very good projects and they weren't being considered, however, you know, I think if we're looking to borrow the money to do them, we have to examine wants and needs. I see some wants and I see some needs and I think we have to prioritize and if we are going to go and borrow money, we have to make sure that we're getting the most out of those problems. I think we have to invest them where they have the potential to bring the most return and taxable sales tax dollars and coffers going for the serious government.
The only thing that I see here, Tony, is on this sheet right here, if you'll look this way, that sheet, there's three of those bond issues will pay off within those eight years, so that's the only thing I can just offhand see is the one that carries out eight years, but we'll be generic to that.
I think that's the reason it looks good on paper, but you, we've just said that, you know, we're going to have to do another landfill issue, you know, in five years, that you've got a three-year window that you're not having, making payments. And I'm not saying that I'm against the process, I'm saying that we need to, we don't just need a rubber stamp, that we need to understand...
I'm not asking you to do that, so... Eddie, the only thing, there is some money that's put back every year towards these projects, are there not?
Yes.
And how much is that? Seventy-five thousand dollars?
Seventy-five thousand dollars a year put back on projects.
So there is some money that's building up there. And the other thing, just to Keith's point, just a little bit, and I understand his concern about the online stuff, but the last two years, our sales tax has increased, I think, three point nine percent and then last year was right at five percent, so, you know, I wish I did have a crystal ball and I could tell you, but I did talk to the bond people today and that interest rate that is quoted on that bond interest is about not quite two tenths of a percent lower in December than you have in November, and that was as of today, but again, that change... December than you have in November, and that was as of today, but again, that changes from month to month, so. I'll sit, give Mr. Wheeler if you can answer on that.